... meeting for the special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for the city of Salem for October 28, 2013. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board member Bennett.
Here.
Board member Tesler is absent. Board member Nanki.
Here.
Board member Claussen.
Here.
Board member Dickey.
Here.
Board member Thomas.
Here.
Board member Benars.
Here.
Board member Clem.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will have the approval of our special meeting agenda. Would board member Bennett please introduce that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the agenda for the special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency.
It's been moved by member Bennett and seconded by member Nanki to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have public comment. No one has signed up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that did want to make public comment and failed to get on the list? All right, we'll move along then. We have a couple of action items. Member Bennett, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move action item 4A. It is the Urban Renewal Agency, sorry, 2014-15 budget calendar.
Thank you. All right, moved by member Bennett, seconded by member Nanki. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And item B?
Madam Mayor, I move item 4B, the Urban Renewal Agency November meeting schedule.
Second.
Moved by member Bennett, seconded by member Benars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no other business to come before the Urban Renewal Agency and this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, John. You were big help.
All right, we will now call to order the Salem City Council meeting for October 28, 2013. Would the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler is absent. Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Claussen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Benars.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, everybody. We have the approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Counselor Bennett, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move additions, deletions, and revisions to the council agenda.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Claussen to approve additions, deletions to the agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding these additions and deletions? All right, hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. It's now time for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? We do. Thank you very much. We'll start with Paul Walther and then Todd Young and Jim Lewis, in that order. You may use either podium. Yes, that's fine. You'll have three minutes. At the end of -- two minutes, the amber light comes on, and at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Walther. I am the administrator of Skyline Baptist Church located at 4787 Skyline Road South. Here to comment on the proposed improvements to Skyline Road. We neither -- we don't oppose them, we're actually in favor of them. What I would like to ask is, is that we're a small church, it was established about 30 years ago. Our founding pastor retired about four years ago, and when you have that kind of a transition, we had our membership and our attendance drop to about 30. We've had our new pastor in place now for about two and a half years, Pastor Young, and we're seeing some good things happen in our church. We're up to about 45 people with a good mix of women, or excuse me, men, women, children of all ages. We run a drug and alcohol recovery program out of the church on Monday evenings. We provide a free meal for the community on Wednesday evenings, Bible study, Sunday worship. The bottom line is, our budget, annual budget's about $65,000 a year, with more than half of that going to the pastor's salary. We have no paid staff. It's all done through volunteers, through the members of the church. And I guess, very simply, what we would ask is, is that you would consider waiving the assessment that's going to be brought against the church for the improvements at Skyline Road, just because it's very possible it might put us into a very difficult position as far as we're just barely kind of surviving at this point. So, we would just respectfully ask that you would consider waiving that assessment for our church. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Nanki.
Thanks for coming down and letting us know what's going on there.
Yes, sir.
Timing-wise, and I haven't talked to staff, I'm assuming that what this staff report has tonight is due and payable all at once right now. If we busted that up, would that make it easier?
Well, it may be, and my understanding is that we do have some options in paying that, that it could be busted up over a 10-year deal. There's a question as far as what that assessment may very well be. We've kind of looked into it. Once again, we, like I said, we're just barely surviving in paying our bills right now. So, even if it was $5,000 to $10,000 spread out, it just would put it undue hardship. I'm not saying that it would eliminate our church.
Sure.
But, once again, we do a lot of things for the community, and we would just ask that you would consider waiving those fees.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Counselor Bennett, did you have a question?
No, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I would just --
It's all right. I can't read your hand signal, so we need to practice.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so very much for your time.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you know what the assessment is going to be?
We're not sure right now. I mean, it was estimated at probably somewhere between $6,000 and $10,000. That's what the estimate that was given to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see Public Works Director raising his hand.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Just to be clear, in the staff report, the assessment is $6,627.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
So, it's -- Yep. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming, and we appreciate the dilemma that you find yourselves in. Oh, we do have another counselor that has a question. Counselor Benars?
So, have you been in contact with the city staff at this point to work out some of the details if you were to make payments?
We have not at this time.
Okay. And, may I suggest that you do, at some point, at least venture down that road to figure out what the options are?
Well, we do know -- I take that back. We know what the options are as far as the payments go. I mean, we have, we can pay it over 10 years. I believe at a 9% interest, making biannual payments, so it'd be 20 payments over 10 years. That sound about right? So, yeah, we have looked into this and spoken with individuals. Was that your question, sir?
Yes, it's exactly my question.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you're looking at the options that are out there.
Yes, we have.
We have several properties on that, on that stretch of road of Skyline that are facing the same issue that you're facing with at this point.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
This is, same thing that Paul was talking about. It is action item 3D, 3.3D, and I'm the pastor of Skyline Baptist. And, there are, as councilman said, several businesses along the Skyline Road corridor that are going to be affected by this. One of the main differences is, we're a nonprofit organization, as opposed to for-profit businesses and so on. A lot of our current church members are on fixed salaries, or fixed incomes, I should say. We have looked at the, we have looked into and heard that we can pay it off in chunks, but for a church like us who were getting hooked up with the Salem Leadership Foundation, we would like to increase our involvement in the community and our outreach to them. The estimate of $6,600, really, that could go a lot of places to make a difference in our community, as opposed to just being paid to the city for the improvements. Again, we're not against the improvements, we like the idea. It is going to present a bit of a burden to us, and it also is going to, most importantly, take money away from ministry and outreach and community enrichment efforts that we are trying to get going and that we are looking into. And, for our situation as a nonprofit who's trying to make a difference, a positive difference in our community, that money could go elsewhere in a more, much more effective manner. And, the whole cost of the project, I don't know what a final total is supposed to be for the cost of working and improving Skyline and making all those changes that they're going to be making. Our amount is a small amount, and I read that on our Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association website, that the money for this had been voted for and provided through the vote of the people back several years ago, long before I came to the church, long before I even came to town.
Mm-hmm.
And so, again, we're just asking for you to consider waiving our fee.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Counselor Benars?
So, are you aware that there was a document signed by individuals that were prior to you, apparently?
Not until this came up. When the appraiser came in to appraise the area, appraise our land, and what was going to be done, and where, and this kind of stuff, we were told that there was a possibility of, that we had one of these deferred agreements that had been signed, and it was signed back in like 2000.
That's one of the things I wanted to make clear. These is a, is an agreement that says that at some point in the future, when, in this case, Skyline is improved, you would come forward with your portion of the improvements for that, the frontage to your property at that point.
Yeah.
I also had another question. Do you, does the church own the property?
Yes.
So, could it use it as collateral to find its own loan?
We could, but that would just put us deeper in debt.
I'm just looking at options, as opposed to 9%, is what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Jim Lewis, did you want to, there you are. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. My name is Jim Lewis. The address is 1458 Crest Hill Avenue Northwest, and I'm here to address Agenda Item 7.8. And, actually, I don't have any prepared statements, but since my term is running out on the Planning Commission, I'll never have this opportunity again. I thought I'd come down and see if you wanted to say anything or ask any questions.
Well, we're very glad to see you, and very, very appreciative of your service to this community and to the city, to the Planning Commission, and for your leadership on the Planning Commission. Thank you so very much for that service. I think maybe we should draw everyone's attention that there is a report in our binder and on the agenda, available to the public, to also access through the website, the cases, the hearings that you've conducted, and the work that's been done. Do you have any words of wisdom you'd like to impart to us regarding our Planning Commission and the work that we're doing?
Well, seldom am I caught with nothing to say, and this is not one of those times.
Okay.
You know, I appreciate the opportunity that the city has given me. I've always felt that volunteer work gives you the opportunity to be rewarded much greater than what the effort usually is that you put in, and so I appreciate the opportunity. I am certainly more knowledgeable about things than I was when I started on the Planning Commission. I got to tell you, one of the tougher things that I had to deal with was hearing over and over again that if I didn't agree with somebody, it was because I didn't understand. And, I'm sure you all have had that same, that same experience. But, I appreciate the opportunity to serve. It's one of the things that I was raised to believe that every citizen should be doing, and so I'm really fulfilling my responsibility.
Well, we've, again, I say, we have sincerely appreciated your service and your leadership. Did I see someone's hand up? Yes, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Lewis. Jim, just wanted to say that, you know, we see the planning commissioners as they're sitting across there, and then it's rare that we actually see them actually do their job safer during joint work sessions, and I was really appreciative of having those, because typically, we haven't in the past, and it's nice to actually be able to sit down together and see our other half, kind of, and get way in before things actually come to us to shoot to the Planning Commission, so, thank you.
Well, if you're interested, the next Planning Commission meeting, the first Tuesday in November, is going to be on CCTV, and so I'd give you an opportunity, in the leisure of your home, to watch us in action.
Wonderful, thanks.
Wonderful. Yes, I think that the record of the six joint work sessions has been a strong one for the city and for the Planning Commission, and I want to say how much I've appreciated that so many of the Planning Commission members have attended those. In fact, I think just about every person, every time. That's been outstanding. Great. Thank you. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim, again, long haul, thanks for doing it for, how many years?
It'll be 10 years in December.
Wow.
But, don't tell anybody.
Just, in terms, and Jim, straighten me out if I don't get this correct, but, you know, the Planning Commission of 10 years ago is not the same as the Planning Commission today in terms of the volume of work and the importance of their decisions. You know, the transition I've seen is that council used to make a lot of those types of decisions, and very, sometimes contentious decisions. And, I think, as, over the last decade, we've got a lot more trust in the Planning Commission, and I think the Planning Commission's done a better job, I'll make that statement, a better job of land use issues than I think we were doing on council. So, we gave you more work to do, and you exceeded it, and so, appreciate it very, very much. Very balanced, good land use body. Did it seem like we were giving you more work?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Good, we succeeded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I sort of reordered the agenda a little bit, surprisingly enough, but we will back up and have council comment. Do councilors have comments to share this evening? Yes, Counselor Thomas?
We had our first McKay Area Master Plan meeting this past week, and we didn't get a big turnout, but we had pretty good turnout, and we got some really good things accomplished in that first meeting, so I just wanted to thank the guys for coming out and doing what they do best. And, hopefully, our next meeting will be even better, leading up to our third meeting, so that we could get that park in working order and using it for the community. The other thing I wanted to say to the NESCA Neighborhood Association folks, we had an awesome turnout for our last meeting. It was full to capacity. Beautiful thing. I encourage them to keep that momentum coming, as well as the, they do the cleanup on Hawthorne and Market Street up to Center Street, where they clean the streets. And, so, they were out there doing that this past week, and they're always doing a good job, so I just wanted to thank them for doing that, and look forward to more to come.
Wonderful. Good news. Other councilors with comments?
I have a comment to share. This last week, some of you know I was out of town, and I was not able to attend the Celebration of Life for Orville Roth, which occurred this last week. And, it certainly gave the community a time to recognize him and all of the accomplishments, and certainly the generosity that he and his family and their foundation have provided to our community, to so many things, particularly things that benefited children. And, Orville's life was a life well-led, and a life of service to the community, and a life of looking out for children and for young people. I will always remember that he insisted that we let those young men and women carry out the groceries, so that they learned how to do a job and how to interact with adults who were not their parents, and he felt very strongly about that role. I'm very happy and pleased to announce that the city has agreed to light the Union Street Railroad Bridge in that green bow tie color for the week of November 4th in memory of Orville Roth.
Other comments? All right, thank you very much. We will move to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Benars to move the consent calendar. Are there any questions or discussions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have public hearings this evening. Do we have, okay, we'll start with the city recorder introducing their first public hearing.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding review of Hearings Officer decision for consolidated variance administrative conditional use and type 2 site plan review for proposed wireless communications facility located at 1765 Center Street Northeast. This will be a new hearing and will result in a decision that supersedes that rendered by the Hearings Officer. Testimony arguments and evidence must be directed toward applicable criteria found in Salem Revised Code 115.020, 116.130B, and 163.070B. Testimony may also address any other criteria a person believes applies to the decision. The record of the Hearings Officer action with respect to this request is part of the record before council. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing in person or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Good evening, I'm Pamela Cole, the case manager for variance administrative conditional use site plan review case 1302 for property at 1765 Center Street Northeast. I'd like to introduce the staff reports and their attachments and this presentation into the record. This application was submitted in May. The public hearing was held August 14th. After additional testimony was submitted and rebuttal was submitted, the Hearings Officer decision was issued on September 9th approving the application with conditions, and on September 23rd, council called up the decision for review. The applicant's requesting this facility in order to install new antenna in the area to provide service, and the antenna need to be approximately 70 feet in height, tower height, needed in order for the signals to clear existing trees and buildings. The applicant provided information from their radio frequency engineers that shows areas of reliable coverage in green, areas of unreliable indoor coverage in yellow, and their existing sites here shown, a little hard to see, but with blue lettering. The proposed tower is identified as SA 46, and it's located near the intersection of 17th Street Northeast and Center Street Northeast. In areas with reliable coverage, all users can expect to have fairly good service and minimal problems with capacity issues and dropped calls. In unreliable indoor coverage areas, persons in dwellings and other buildings may not always receive the highest quality service. So, the proposal would actually increase the green area, as you can see on the next map, so increasing the area of reliable coverage in the area around 17th and Center. AT&amp;T's engineers determined where the new facility would be needed to provide the service that they would like to be able to improve. The applicant looked for sites where antennas could be co-located on existing facilities or on tall buildings. There are no cell towers in the service area, and the applicant couldn't obtain permission to co-locate on the nearest tall buildings, which are at Salem Hospital Facility, which is toward the east on the map. And, they also couldn't obtain permission to locate on a wireless facility on a utility pole that's on the other side, south side of Center Street. So, the applicant determined that a new tower was needed. The applicant determined the proposed site was the best available for the new tower. It's zoned CR, retail commercial. The cell tower would be located in the rear yard of an existing convenience store. It's abutting other commercial retail zone properties, including restaurants and retail, and it is next to a residential property on the north. And, because of that, and because most of the area is zoned residential, this location would require a variance from a 300-foot setback that's required in the criteria for the administrative conditional use. The convenience store is surrounded on the east by the SOS Club, on the west by retail and a bar and restaurant that are also zoned CR. On the north, to the northwest, there's a single-family dwelling on a CR zoned property, and directly to the north, a single-family dwelling on an RS, single-family residential zoned property. On the south side of commercial, or of Center Street, sorry, there are other areas of retail and offices also zoned retail commercial. This is a large tree that's located on the SOS Club property, and the applicant's proposing to design this facility as a tree to blend in with the existing tree. This is a view toward the site where the tower would be located, behind the existing convenience store and just east of the developments to the west. This is a view from the approximate location of the base of the tower, looking toward the nearest residential single-family zoned property. On the applicant's site plan, the existing market is just outside the boundaries of this slide, which would be to the bottom of the page. They're proposing to locate the tower as close as possible to the convenience store, but still allowing the convenience store owners and employees to use the existing doors on the back of the store. They're also proposing the rectangular equipment shelter that's going to enclose most of the equipment for the tower, and it does have a couple of air conditioning units on the north side. There's also a site obscuring fence that would be surrounding the tower and that equipment enclosure and the HVAC units. And then, they're also proposing a 15-foot wide landscape buffer on the north, which is closest to residential single-family, and a 10-foot wide landscape buffer on the east, closest to the SOS Club. They're also proposing a parking space for maintenance vehicles, which would be accessing the site approximately once per month. The applicant also provided elevation drawings showing a proposed design as a monofur, and you can also see the fence and the equipment enclosure at the base. And, they also provided photo simulations. I chose two of the ones that they included in their report. This is one from the intersection of A Street and 18th Street looking south, and this one is from across the street on the west side of 17th Street, looking across the CR zoned properties toward the proposed tower. While we did receive objections from northeast neighbors and several citizens, staff addressed those in the staff reports. They're included in your packet. And, the Hearings Officer reviewed all the testimony at the public hearing and everything submitted afterwards, and his decision was to approve the proposal with several conditions. In summary, they would be accommodating at least one more antenna array below the level of the one that's proposed with this application. It would be designed as an evergreen tree to conceal the antenna, would be surrounded with the six-foot-high fence or wall. They'd be providing that landscaped buffer area on the north and the east, and also, if the facility ever was ceasing to operate, they would notify the city within 60 days and remove the facility within six months. Steps recommendation would be to affirm the Hearings Officer's decision, but based on recent conversations we've had with the applicant, we would like to propose one additional condition, and the applicant has agreed to do this at the building permit stage, and that would be to relocate the HVAC units from the north end to the south end of that equipment shelter, so they would be closer to the commercial convenience store and farther away from the single-family residential. And, that concludes my presentation. Of course, I'll be available for questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have some people signed up? All right. I'd like to ask first with the applicant. Please come forward. I'm assuming, are you Mark Adams? But, I'm not certain.
No.
No.
No, but if Mark would like to take our place, that's fine.
Thank you.
No, Richard Bush, on behalf of AT&amp;T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, if you can give your address, please?
Certainly. Richard Bush, 22525 Southeast 64th Place, Issaquah, Washington. Thank you. You're being handed some materials that we put together tonight as additional information for your consideration. We are supporting the staff report and asking you to approve the application. The issues that, the biggest lightning rods are, number one, why residential area? And then, number two, what about the health impacts of this right next to the residential area? So, I'd like to first deal with why the residential area. We need to remember the map that was put up about the neighborhood. We had the cemetery and the hospital properties at the east end of the area, but as you move closer to where the proposed site is, most of the, most of the properties, virtually all the property, is high-density residential. And, since the hospital property was not available, and the cemetery property wasn't available, that left us with just the, primarily the residential footprint with the very few properties that are commercial in there. So, we approached the convenience store owner and reached an agreement to put the facility in the back of the property and conceal the facility as a mono pine tree. So, the concerns that everybody expresses, we understand, but as the wireless network matures, as more and more users use their phones for matures, as more and more users use their phones for data, video, as well as voice, they expect to have service inside the home, and that's why AT&amp;T and the other carriers are designing sites that are closer into the neighborhood, and that's going to be the trend for the next several years, is to provide high-quality indoor coverage where people expect to have it within their homes. The next question I'd like to deal with is some of the applicant's testimony, talking about the health implications of wireless communications facilities. Some of the opponents have submitted testimony that the World Health Organization has linked wireless communications services, wireless facilities, to cancer. And I think, but the first thing I'd like to do is clarify, no, that's not the case. The second, starting at page four in the materials that you were given, the first three pages are the email that came back from the summit, from the hospital, confirming that the hospital property is not available for ground space. So those are the first three pages of the materials that you've been handed. If you, what I'd like to do is clarify what the current state of the science is on wireless communications facilities and health. We all know that under federal law, we're not supposed to make a decision based upon the health implications of wireless communications facilities, because AT&amp;T has proven that this facility will comply with the FCC's rules. But the question keeps coming up, time and time again, and I don't think there's any harm in having that discussion, even though the decision can't be based upon the health implications of the facility. First and foremost, the first document that you have is the World Health Organization website description of their position on electromagnetic fields in public health, primarily mobile phones. If you look at page two of this handout, right below, "Are there any health effects?" The second sentence in that first paragraph states, "To date, no adverse health effects have been established as being caused by mobile phone use." And that's the statement from the World Health Organization. So any statements to the contrary in opponent's testimony simply is not the case. Another statement in the opponent's testimony is that there is some link between radio frequencies and childhood leukemia, according to the World Health Organization, and that's is not the case as well. There is one presentation, one PowerPoint presentation, on the WHO website. It's a 34-page presentation. I just included two pages from that as the next document in your materials. And it says, it's the study, or the report on childhood leukemia and EMF. And it goes through a very detailed scientific analysis, most of which I can understand because of graphs, charts, summary documents. But the second to the last page in the entire report was a statement of the current understanding, and childhood leukemia and radio frequency, this is page two of this particular handout, there's no evidence to date, but there are numerous case reports. ELF exposure from mobile phones, they need more data. Low environmental exposures, virtually no relevant information about that. And then the feasibility of well-designed studies is unknown. We can do a lot to improve the existing attempts. This is the only material that I found on the World Health Organization website about childhood leukemia, and it certainly isn't a statement about the radio frequencies being linked. So what has happened, separate and apart from the testimony, what has happened? Well, there is a portion of the World Health Organization that studies potential cancer-causing agents, and that's the IARC. And in May of 2011, they came out and said, they labeled radio frequency transmissions as a potential carcinogenic element, but it was classified in group 2B. This is the next handout. And it's possibly carcinogenic. Under 2B, it's basically, it's possible, we don't have enough evidence in order to consider it as a cause, so we're going to keep an eye on it and gather more information. So that's the next handout. The following handout is the table of everything in that same group, 2B, that's classified as possibly carcinogenic, and it's the seven-page table. And just if you want to get a feel for some of the other things that are in the similar risk category as RF, according to the World Health Organization, on page two, if you look at the second page of the handout, the large section, two-thirds of the way down the page, says coffee. Coffee is treated as the same potential cancer-causing agent as radio frequency emissions. If you go two more pages further back, being a firefighter has the same classification. And if you go two more pages back, pickled vegetables are in the same category. So the purpose of classification 2B, group 2B, is just, let's watch it. Okay? It's not known to be a cause. Let's just be concerned about it and watch for future developments. Okay, so that's the World Health Organization. Who else has said anything about it? The next handout talks about, is from the American Cancer Society, separate from the wireless industry. And if you take a look at the handout, at the bottom of the second page of that handout, at the end of a long discussion about, "Do cellular phone towers cause cancer?", the last statement at the bottom there is, "For the reasons discussed above, cellphone antennas or towers are unlikely to cause cancer." That's the current position from the American Cancer Society. The last item in the handout I gave you is probably the most useful from a practical standpoint, and it's a document from the Federal Communications Commission. It's a 34-page document that it's a, it was produced by a joint federal and local government commission on how should the communities deal with applications like these? What are the factors you should take into consideration? It's a very good guide. But if you go to page eight of this handout, at the very top of page eight, this whole, this joint body, this joint commission, said, "A cellular facility is categorically excluded from consideration as a potential health hazard, regardless of what its power is, if it is not on a building, and if the lowest point of the antenna is at least 33 feet above ground level." So what that says is, if the antennas are mounted on a monopole or a monopine, and the lowest level of the antenna is 33 feet or higher above ground level, then it's excluded from analysis by the Federal Communications Commission as a potential harmful source. So that's the resources that are actually out there. And the facility as designed, with the antennas up at the 65-foot level, certainly isn't going to raise any issues for the, for the health concerns here. I'd be glad to answer whatever questions you may have about the application or the materials on health.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Dickey.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bush, you had mentioned, and I wanted to be sure I understood where they were, two alternative sites that you looked at, one at the hospital and one at the cemetery?
That's correct.
There wasn't one then across the street at that? Did you look there as well, at that?
Across the street from the proposed site?
The other quickie mart, or whatever it's title is, but it's that kind of market.
Okay, directly to the south of the proposed site. We did look at the potential of co-locating on the existing structure that's either on that property or adjacent to it, and we were not able to get onto that very same structure because the pole owner, the local utility, Pugent Portland General Electric, if I recall correctly, has a policy of only one carrier per pole. So then we would be left with having a new pole, a brand-new pole, on either that commercial property or the one where we selected.
Just out of curiosity, is that policy of one carrier per pole common in the business?
Given the nature of the pole, I would say yes. If you take, if you look at the pole, it's a distribution pole. It's not a transmission pole. Distribution poles are shorter.
Okay.
And so they just don't have the structural capacity or the height in order to accommodate multiple carriers.
And you're saying then, because this really wasn't in the public hearing portion, as I recall, that these are the two alternative sites you looked at, that you made contact regarding for?
Yes, that was in the public record before the hearings examiner.
Okay, because I saw it come in af, I thought it came in after the public hearing, actually.
Maybe the speaker can comment on it, but I believe the evidence regarding alternatives, some of the evidence regarding alternative sites came in during your rebuttal period after the hearing was closed?
The hearing, the hearing was closed, but the record was left open for the presentation of additional evidence. So I, to me, that's a part of the record.
But I'm testing. I guess, I guess my question is, but wasn't available to anyone but the hearings officer as part of the record? It wasn't something I could have come in and commented on, like, "I know a third site", or "I don't think you went to enough sites", or, so it was untested in a public hearing?
I, I'm going to look to my fact witness on that one to see whether prior, at the hearing, before the hearings examiner, there was evidence that the hospital said no. I believe that we had evidence at the hearing that the hospital said no. It was to the rooftop. And after the hearing was closed, but before the record was closed, we made inquiries about ground space. And then through the new document I gave you tonight, we went back and reconfirmed ground space is not, specifically was not available. So I, I beg to differ. Yeah, let's go through it.
Okay. You have then, you're now saying there were three possible sites, a ground space, a roof, and a cemetery. Am I understanding correctly? Now you've changed it a little bit.
No, two properties.
I want to make sure I understand it.
Two properties.
Yeah, but one's on a roof, one's on the ground, one's in a cemetery. That sounds like three. I mean, you tested three possible configurations. Two on one property.
And then we can go four.
Oh, okay.
Well, but this is all on the record.
Well, no, these are all.
The hospital, yeah, the hospital roof, the hospital ground, the cemetery ground, and then the potential of co-locating across the street from the proposed site on the utility pole that was not feasible. So those are the, that's the collection of sites that were aggressively considered. Okay?
Well, I do have a question as to whether these were part of the public record in the, in the hearing, so that affected residents could comment. I, I'm just not clear whether they were on the record for the public hearing, for potential comment by the public.
That's a question for City Attorney.
For you. I'm looking at you, I guess.
Dan Atchison, City Attorney. We'd have to look at, we had to look at the complete record from the hearings officer's proceeding. I, I know there's, there's some evidence in the record that some additional material from the applicant was submitted during the rebuttal period about site selection. Whether all the sites were mentioned during the open hearing, I don't know. We had to take a look at the record on that. At any rate, this is a de novo proceeding, and the evidence is in the record now.
And the public had adequate opportunity to comment on those options here tonight.
Well, okay. I'm just learning about these, I think. If it sounded like two, now it sounds like four. Are there any others at all that you checked on?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Gross?
Glenn Gross, Interim Committee Development Director. In discussing this with Pamela, it's our understanding that while all the material was eventually submitted at the hearing officer level, some of it did come in after the record was closed for public testimony. So it came in either as additional evidence, as you said earlier, or as part of a rebuttal. So we're not clear, we don't believe that it was all available as part of the hearing process for the public to comment on. Is that, is that your understanding as well?
Okay. I'm going to pay very close attention to the words that we're choosing here, because I think we're mixing up different terms. The record, to me, closes at the end of the hearing and rebuttal, additional testimony and rebuttal testimony, which, if I recall correctly, was several weeks after, or a couple, at least a couple of weeks after the close of the actual hearing itself. That's all a part of the record. So during the actual hearing itself, I don't believe all of that evidence was presented during the hearing, but it came in prior to the close of the record, a couple of weeks after the hearing was closed.
So I would defer to the City Attorney as to whether or not that would constitute new evidence at the time of rebuttal or not.
Well, there are, pardon me for interrupting, but there were two stages to the post-hearing testimony. The first was additional direct testimony, and then during rebuttal, rebuttal is limited to responding to what was submitted during the additional direct testimony. And I believe everything that we've submitted complies with those requirements. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
To clarify, regardless of whether what they submitted was new evidence or just argument and rebuttal, it really doesn't matter at this point, because this is a de novo proceeding. This is all open record. This is all a hearing where people can submit new evidence. So you're issuing a new decision. If there were any procedural errors during the hearing officer's proceeding, which is not clear absolutely that there were, this results in a new decision, and this evidence is in the record now.
Yes, Counselor Bennett.
Thank you. Just a question. Although we're being asked here tonight to affirm the hearings officer's decision, I mean, we are, we are being asked to affirm what it sounds like potentially. No one's saying whether there is or isn't a kind of faulty process that occurred at the hearings officer level.
What's the question?
That's, that's it.
What is the question?
Right or wrong, true or false?
That wasn't a question, that was a statement, so.
Yeah, I want to understand what's going on here. My constituents come to a public hearing to testify on a fact situation. They come to the public hearing in front of a hearings officer, are not given a full disclosure of the situation, of what's gone on, and now they're expected to come here tonight, this is, just so I understand, and testify now on these four sites as part of the de novo review? Is that kind of how this works?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
All right, we have Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Benars, then Counselor Clem, did you have your hand up?
No, Madam Mayor, I was just asking the question if people are here to testify on it.
Okay.
Before counselor questions is all, it's a brand-new public hearing, so.
I thought everyone in the public can do questioning.
And then do questioning after the public has had a chance to testify. Is that?
...an opportunity to question you.
Mr. Bush?
Yeah.
Are there additional questions for the applicant?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Counselor Dickey, I believe, had her hand up, and then Counselor Benars is after that. Counselor Dickey.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple of questions for you, because I haven't really been through a process like this before, and understanding just how the whole cell tower thing works. A couple of things. One, I'm wondering, so you talked about not being able to co-locate on another facility. Is this, would this tower be something that another company could come and co-locate on with AT&amp;T, or is it your exclusive tower?
No, this, this facility does have enough space for a second carrier to locate on it, and if you would look at the drawings, there's a second set of antennas drawn approximately 10 feet below the proposed set for AT&amp;T.
Okay, so that wouldn't necessarily be AT&amp;T. It could be someone who has an agreement with you to use your facility.
That's correct.
And then my other question is, one of the conditions was if, for some reason, you cease to use this pole anymore, it would have to be removed. And I'm just wondering, I mean, it seems like we see cell towers going up everywhere. Does that ever happen? And is it because just an area doesn't need it? Is it because new technology has come along, and there's not a need for a tower, but there's still a need for the service? Can you explain that?
Yes, I can. I started in the business in 1986, so I've seen a few of the generations of technology come and go. There's been two, in my experience, two times when towers have been removed or abandoned. The first is back in the early days, we built the tallest we could in the highest point in the community. And after the first three or four years, we learned those facilities were covering too much turf. The customers were signing up for service faster than AT&amp;T had expected. So we built the lower sites to cover a smaller geographic area, and then the taller sites were taken down. That's the first cut. The second cut is when there's consolidation in the industry. When McConaughey and T merge, when T-Mobile and so on, if they have duplicate facilities close by, the carriers will decide, okay, which of the two adjacent facilities will we keep, and then they will abandon the other one. And if there's another tenant on the extra facility, that tenant will assume ownership of it, or it will be sold off, or it will be dismantled and removed.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Benars?
I have to ask this, and I'm a little bit looking at Dan for the moment, but you brought up the health aspects of radio waves and so forth, and you've provided a fair amount of testimony tonight to us. I'm looking back at Dan to ask, is this something that we can deliberate on this, at this point, at this level? Or am I incorrect? At some point, I thought that was one of those things that we could not deliberate on.
Counselor Benars, that's correct. Essentially, the federal law precludes local governments from basically basing their decision on radio emissions and potential health risks based on that.
So that is not a decision-making factor to this evening?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, so the second question that I had, I saw elevations of the, of the antenna, and you talked about it being 33 feet or higher above the ground. In this case, it will be higher than that. I think it's 69 feet, 11 inches. My question is, relative to the other trees that are around, is this, is this artificial tree, the antenna, is it going to be higher or lower? All I saw were two pictures that kind of showed a projection, but.
Okay, as, from having driven the area several, a couple of months ago, my recollection is that this will be higher than the predominant tree height in the area, probably by 50... is that this will be higher than the predominant tree height in the area, probably by 15 to 20 feet. So, but remember, this is a line-of-sight type impact where if people are in the residential area and they're in the trees, when they look up at the 40-foot tree in their front yard, they look up to the sky, they don't look straight across at the structure that's across on the next parcel over. The best view from staffs, from Pamela's pictures, was from the east-looking west, straight across the SOS Club parking lot, where it's going to be a full-on view, just because there's no trees blocking it. So as you go back into the residential community to the north of the proposed site, there are, my recollection is 40-foot plus or minus trees that will substantially screen the view of the facility. But when you get out to the commercial area or just west of the facility, when you have, where you have the, the commercial businesses, the cleaner and the restaurant on the west side, if you're out at the street looking toward the east, you'll see the top portion of it.
So I understand that they chose a fir tree because of its ability to go up very high. If memory serves me, there's a fair number of fir trees scattered, not concentrated, but scattered in that neighborhood.
I'm sure there are. I did not focus on those. I focused, when I looked, on the immediately surrounding trees because that's going to be the biggest impact. Thank you for how it blends in with those surrounding trees, but thank you.
All right. Were there other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify, though, that the testimony from the Neighborhood Association did not arrive until after the close of the public hearing as well. So the first opportunity that AT&amp;T had to review the comments from the Neighborhood Association was during the additional testimony phase. So to the extent that that is any consideration in the fundamental fairness of the proceeding, I think that should be taken into consideration as well.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm not sure, but I would, I believe there's someone from the Northeast Neighborhoods Association to speak. I'd like to have that person come forward next and identify yourself. And you actually will have 15 minutes. Yes?
Five.
Five minutes? This chart says 15 minutes. Oh, sorry. Five minutes.
All right. I can't talk for 15 anyway, so. Okay, my name is Nancy McDaniel. I'm with Northeast Neighbors, Neighborhood Association, speaking on behalf of NEN. Our testimony is on the very last page of the packet that you got today, if you scroll down. And it's, it's two pages. It's not really long. I'm not going to read it to you or anything like that. I'd like to basically say that we're opposed to the variance because it fails to demonstrate compliance with the approval criteria. We feel like the need for an 81% variance is, is because essentially it is shoehorning this tower into a space that's too small for it. We have five reasons here altogether that we're opposed to the variance. And the first one, as Mr. Bush stated, there was some testimony that just came in that we had not seen. So the, the discussion of the ground lease is not, not current anymore. Apparently, they did contact Salem Hospital and rule out the ground lease. I would like to talk about this topic a little bit more at the end. The second, our second objection was then demonstrating how the noise impacts would be minimized, and because we were concerned about the HVAC equipment being on the side closest to the property line. It's good to hear that they're going to relocate the HVAC equipment to the south side, and that will be a condition of the permit. We'd also like to note that the application states only batteries will be used for backup power instead of a generator, and we felt that should also be made a condition of the Our third objection was that the application doesn't address the effect of the variance on property values. The criterion in the code is granting a variance will not be unreasonably detrimental to the public welfare or to property or improvements in the neighborhood of the subject property. And we feel like, as, as you can see from the zoning map there, this is a dense residential neighborhood. There are a lot of people who live there and whose, I would guess probably their life savings are tied up in their, in their homes. And the John Elwood, the joint property owner, is going to get compensated. The SOS Club will get compensated, and the property owner of the, of the, the Convenience Mart is going to get compensated, but these people won't be. We also talk about the size of the variance is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan residential policy eight, which is to protect residential areas from more intensive land use activity in abutting zones. Then finally, I'd like to talk about, address the question of the application itself. And I don't know about the here, the record being open or closed. What I know is that we have, our basic question is how complete does the application have to be? When we got the application, before it went to the hearings officer, it stated erroneously that they did not look at Jason Lee Cemetery because a tower couldn't be erected in the cemetery. The staff report for the hearings officer noted that that was, that was not correct. So they did not look into that until we asked for that at the hearing, before the hearings officer. Second, they didn't provide documentation about Salem Hospital. They said that the grant, the rooftop lease was not an option at the, and this was in the testimony to the hearings officer, but there was no documentation. That documentation was provided only after the Neighborhood Association asked for it. And third, the documentation on the ground lease was provided only in preparation for this hearing tonight. We, I didn't see that, and it was not, I went and got from Pamela Cole, I got the rebuttal testimony after the hearings officer, and it wasn't there. So the, we're having a hard time dealing with this because the goalposts keep moving. The hearings, the hearing was October, excuse me, August 14th, and the last documentation submitted on the sighting was submitted to the city on October 17th. So I hope I got the dates right. August 14th is the hearings officer date, and the last documentation on the sighting was received by the city on October 17th. So that concludes my prepared testimony. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Counselor Dickey.
Yeah, thanks for coming down. I wanted to ask about your, I guess it's number three, where you talked about the potential for property values going down. Do you have a sense of what you think that would be for, for a home? I mean, how, like a dollar amount or a percentage or something that would, that would affect a property owner?
No, we tried researching this, and we, it's all over, the research is all over the map. It basically comes down, it's very specific to the property, to the, to the city, to the location. So it's, it's, I think the research, the only thing it was consistent on is that you can't generalize.
Other questions by other counselors? Counselor Bennett?
Yes. Nancy, what is the current use of that portion of the lot that the store is on? What currently goes on back there?
I think it's, it's just a gravel lot.
Okay. Was there someone at the public hearing that spoke to the use of that lot, and what, what goes on back there?
I think that they're going to have to put some pavement back there to allow equipment to pull in, to service the, the tower.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll now proceed with the rest of the people on the list. We'll start with Mark Adams, followed by Joan Lloyd.
Madam Mayor, honorable council members, my name is Mark Adams, and I'm the property owner that would be looking at the largest artificial Christmas tree ever put in the city of Salem, if this goes on. For your information, a little history, I was born and raised in that neighborhood. My parents still live there. And the first house, little cottage that my wife and I bought when we were first married, is the property at 540 Eighteenth Street, which looks directly to the gravel parking lot behind the Convenience Store. My concerns are many. I'm not going to get into the health issue. For years, I served on the Salem Kaiser School Board, and while I served on the school board, we cited and built the West Salem High School. The school district, for history purposes, owns quite a bit of property in West Salem that has power lines going through it. It was the attorney's recommendation that we not build any prop, any schools on that property because of the perceived health issues. Whether they're backed by science or not, the public perception is that is not a place where you want children. My concern is the same thing. I don't believe that the public perception is going to enhance in any way, shape, or form the neighborhood. This is an old, established neighborhood with a number of small, cute little cottages and homes. They're not big, expensive houses, but when you put something like this structure in that neighborhood, you severely affect the future homeowners in that neighborhood. It's going to affect the demographics in one of the older neighborhoods in town. And quite honestly, it's going to be an eyesore. And so my concern as a property owner is one of value, but my bigger concern as, as a child that was raised in that neighborhood is, is what does this do to the neighborhood I was growing up in? And my concern is, it's just another shot at an old, small neighborhood, and those old neighborhoods can't take too many shots like this. The fact of the matter is, AT&amp;T will find another location. And if this is turned down tonight, they're creative enough to, they will figure out a way to either pay or partner with someone else, find an existing tower. So my, my request tonight is that you deny staff's recommendation, do not accept it, vote no on the tower, let AT&amp;T do their due diligence, and find an appropriate place, maybe a higher location, but definitely a better location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Adams? Counselor Bennett?
Just briefly, Mark, you and I spoke just a moment before all of this started, and I had a chance to, to participate in what, what I would call an ex parte contact and wanted to disclose that. I asked what you were here about.
Sure.
And you pointed to the property and said, my house is here.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that you and I had a brief discussion. But I also wondered, then, at that piece of property, how close is that to where this pole will be? How, pole falls, how close does it get to your house?
It hits my house.
Hits your house?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not a great athlete, but I could throw a football over and hit the pole, if that tells you anything. It's a very narrow street. It literally is a one-lane street. There's no sidewalks. And so the property is to go right up to the edge of the street. And, you know, like I said, unfortunately, you walk out my front door and you look at that piece of property. And as far as the height of trees in the neighborhood, there's nothing even close to that tall. And there's not a lot of trees in that neighborhood because of the density of the houses. The old trees just haven't survived, so it really would stand out.
Are there other houses within that similar, within a similar distance? I mean, are you the only house that gets it at this?
No, I'm, I'm the third one down from the corner on, on Center Street. And so there's a number of houses in that short block that would be directly affected. And that's just on the little side street, Eighteenth Street. Remember, the Seventeenth Street is a high-traffic street on, on the other side there. And that's the, what they're saying in your maps and pictures showed would be the most visible part. But something that large, you're going to see it from wherever you're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Clem?
Yes, for the record, I also was part of that conversation where Mr. Adams was pointing out to Counselor Bennett and I, the location of where his house was in relation to the proposed tower.
And for the record, I appreciate being welcomed and recognized.
Appreciate your testimony. Thank you so much. Joan Lloyd, followed by Suzanne Layman.
Hi, I'm Joan Lloyd, 1577 Court Street Northeast, and I am opposed to the cell tower being placed at 1765. I feel that the need was not demonstrated for having this tower. When I asked Chris Forsberg, who's the Velocitel agent, how many homes or how many customers would be, are affected by this lack of service, he said that he didn't think that AT&amp;T would give me that information, would want to divulge that information. So I had to pretend I was a private investigator, and I called up AT&amp;T Customer Service and said, which I was, checking on different carriers to see how their service was in that specified area. And I was told that the service was good. I said I had heard that there were complaints, that people could not use their phones inside the house. Oh, no, this is wonderful. And that they have, I don't know these numbers, but anyway, that it was good for 3G, 4G, and 4G LTE coverage. So we had also been told that there were other carriers in that same area that were having problems. So I called a couple other ones. I didn't call all the carriers. And, and also said that, that was, I believe it was Sprint and, oh my gosh, I can't even see now which ones I called, which other ones I called to see. But there were two other ones, and they all said that the, the coverage was just fine there. And so I feel that there was not, and the real need demonstrated for this. Then, oh yes, excuse me, it was T-Mobile and Sprint. I looked at their coverage map. Then, the, one of the conditions of building a cell, cell tower is that there would be able to be another carrier co-located on there. But in Exhibit I, the engineer states, the tower, and I'm quoting this, "The tower will have limited co-location possibilities to other carriers because the remaining space on the pole will be well below the tree and average clutter heights." Well, the, how can they say that there could be another carrier co-locating there? And in fact, theirs is above the tree line at 65 feet. So this lower one that I thought I had been told 15 feet below, but I heard tonight it was 10 feet below, will not be, nobody will be able to put an array there, or an antenna, whatever they're called.
Thank you, your time is up.
I just see that. All right, thank you for listening.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Lloyd? Well, thank you, we appreciate your testimony. Suzanne Layman, followed by Gail Petersdorf.
My name is Suzanne Layman. I live at 1896 Court Street Northeast. My objections are very simple. I appreciate very much the time that counselors and others contribute to the city, and my remarks relate to that. I think this is such a tremendous waste of your time. Apparently competent people, whose job it is, have determined the parameters of this regulation about the location of cell towers. And if this were a matter of a few feet or something like that, that might really be debatable, that would be one thing, but the huge variance from the, the regulations requiring this are just ridiculous. I just don't think you should be wasting your time on it. There are more important things going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Layman? All right, thank you, appreciate your testimony. Gail Petersdorf, followed by Doug Hap, Harp, excuse me, Doug Harp.
No comment by Gail. She said Gail just.
Oh, all right. Mr. Harp?
My name is Doug Harp. I live at 464 Twenty-Fourth Street Northeast, Salem, Oregon. I'm also the president of the SOS Club. And the SOS Club isn't necessarily for or against this in any way. We, the SOS Club, Inc. wants to stay out of public controversy, but we are, we, we are in negotiations with Velocitel for an easement, and we think we've just about have something worked out with them, and they're a friendly company to work with. And I also just want to speak as a citizen and not as a representative of SOS Club, Inc., that I do live in that neighborhood, and I do have bad cell phone service in my home. Thank you.
Excuse me, don't leave. Are there questions for Mr. Harp? All right, thank you very much. Pete Dane, Dane or Dave, I can't be certain, followed by Angela Harris. Pete Dane, Dane or Dave, I can't be certain, followed by Angela Harris.
Hi, my name is Peter Dane. I live at 720 Capitol Street Northeast. And I hope that the planners can look at the bigger picture and see what the future mosaic will be for cell phone coverage, so efforts won't be duplicated, so that planning could be maximized, to take in consideration a future placement of towers. So I think that would be more cost-effective, and there'd be less side effects if the big picture could be looked at, planning-wise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? All right. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Angela Harris, followed by Leslie Paulson. Is Angela Harris here? Don't care to testify? All right. Thank you. Leslie Paulson?
Hi, my name, my name is Leslie Paulson, and I live at 930 Garnet Street. And I'm here to oppose the variance, which is an 81% setback, mainly because of the high density of the neighborhood, because of the low tree canopy, and because this really basically condemns people in the neighborhood to eyesores and slums. Not here, but one of the women that's mostly affected is dying of cancer, and she is very sick. She was very involved in the Neighborhood Association. And when you, when you meet these people, you realize that, you know, people want to be able to sell their homes when they get sick and dying. And one of the side effects of cellphone towers is that people don't always want to buy your house because they're concerned about health side effects. So this is really, the 300-foot setback has a reason. An 81% reduction creates a real problem for us in the Englehood neighborhood. We really want to be able to keep livability in our neighborhood. And I don't think that the arguments have really presented a real reason for the setback variance.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right. Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to testify on this matter but wasn't able to get their name on the list? All right. We'll go back to rebuttal by the affected party, and you'll have seven minutes.
Thank you. Richard Bush again. I think the only comment I'd like to make deals with the belief that if this is denied, AT&amp;T will have the ability to find another spot to put this facility in the area. Just remember that map, where it is all residential, save the very small properties, which, guess what, are adjacent to residential. There are no other feasible areas to look here. No matter where we go, it's going to be adjacent to residential. No matter where we go, it's going to be in somebody's backyard. And the challenge we have tonight is to, is to say, do we want to allow the carriers, plural, AT&amp;T, and then the other potential co-locator, who would be at the 55-foot level, which has already been established as well above the tree line there, because there are no trees that are anywhere close to that height? That, are we going to allow them to serve the area or not? Because if this is denied, then you're going to deny any other site anywhere else in this whole area. That's our challenge. I'd like to answer any other questions that you may have.
Are there any further questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll now entertain questions for staff. The Counselor Dickey, followed by Counselor Clem, and then Bennett, and then Paulson. Thank you.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions. One, we heard some testimony about thinking about the bigger picture. And, and I'm really, I'm wondering about this whole issue of co-locating, because I know that's something we talked about with our new wireless ordinance that we'll be looking at in the near future. You know, and, and I know that this applicant tried to co-locate, wasn't given permission to do that. And as we encourage, I guess, I'm not quite sure what I'm asking, other than, is co-locating something that's common? Or is it, is it more, I mean, it sounds like this applicant tried to co-locate, was told by someone who owned a pole, "Nope, you can't co-locate here." And we encourage that. Is that something that we have any say over? Or is it just whoever owns the pole can say, "Yep, you can co-locate here," or "No, you can't. Go build your own pole"?
We do have a lot of applications for co-locations. I had one, I signed off today. I had one I signed off last week. We've had several, just in the last year, I think I have about a dozen, maybe 20, applications that I've signed off. The carriers typically want to co-locate first, because that's the easiest thing to do. And when we've issued cell tower decisions in the past, we've generally had a condition like that, if it's been a tall enough tower, that they allow other carriers to co-locate. And what we don't get involved with is in the negotiations after we approve the land use cases and the building permits. So until we get a case like this, where an applicant comes to us and says, "I tried here, I tried there, they said no, they said no," then we don't get a lot of information. But a lot of the taller towers have two or three different carriers on them now. Another source is the rooftop of a building. So downtown, we have several tall buildings with multiple carriers. In this area, the hospital does have several carriers on the rooftop, but as the evidence that was submitted for this hearing, which is new evidence, testifies, they're not accepting new co-locations, and they're asking their other carriers to leave, because they don't know what they're doing with that building and that property. So I think that for most of the applicants, by the time they get to the planning division, they've explored all of their options in pretty great detail. Sometimes they've come in to talk to us before they've even submitted for a pre-application conference. They want to do the easiest, least expensive thing, so that's co-location. So typically, when they get to this stage, I talk to people almost once, twice a week, different carriers, different representatives, and they're always saying, "Well, we tried here, but we can't do it there. We tried there, and we've looked at all our options, and now I'm stuck with having to get a variance." Or, "Now I'm stuck with having to get something that's really not the best location, but it's the only option." So yes, the co-location's definitely preferred by the city and by the carriers.
So then I just have a follow-up, kind of a larger question then. So as we think about our new ordinance that we'll be looking at very soon, would this particular application fall within that? And if, if we pass our new ordinance the way we have discussed it, and I know we haven't had a chance to discuss it on the council floor, but I'm just wanting to have an understanding of, would this even be coming to us, or would it be allowed?
A cell tower in the CR zone would be allowed. All new cell towers would go through a public hearings process with the hearings officer, and they could be called up by council. This one, at 55 feet, would meet the proposed setback, which is 30 feet, but that's being discussed. And we're thinking, based on commentary from council at the work session in July, that the 30-foot setback is probably not the option that we're going to recommend in the end. So it would meet that going forward, and the height limit would be well within the limits for that zone. All right. Thanks.
All right. Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. 300-foot setback, variances to that, have, just so I have some sort of an idea, have we approved variances for this in downtown Salem? I consider this-
In downtown, the cases that I've worked on personally have been on Lancaster, near the Kaiser Permanente facility, but located on the McKay property, and that was a variance from the CO zone setback, not the residential. I've worked on one on Commercial, behind the Scottish Rite Temple, 4090 Commercial. That was less than 300 feet from residential. We also had prior to me working on them, another one on Liberty, that's within 300 feet of residential. And in all those cases, we ended up asking for conditions similar to the ones that we're requesting and recommending tonight, with the design as a tree or something similar to blend in with the neighborhood, plus the fencing and other, the landscaping. So we've ended up with fairly similar results in several other cases. And there are probably others out there that I just personally don't have in my database.
Sure. And not all those areas were older neighborhoods that are maybe as dense as this. But the CR zone, is that also a location where the antenna can be?
It is potentially, yes. But again, right now, because it's within 300 feet of residential and commercial office in this particular case, and in those others, they did have to go through a variance and prove that they needed a variance.
Same as this?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And potentially, this site, they could have requested an even taller tower, over 70 feet, and that would have been a specific conditional use, very similar criteria, basically handled the same with the variance as well.
The applicant states that that would likely be approved under that 70-foot. Would be a different type of land use application, and that that would not be, would not need a variance, then?
I'm not sure exactly how that you're coming to that conclusion. But if, if they proposed today a 75-foot tower on this site, it would have gone through a specific conditional use process, which is a hearings officer hearing, plus the variance, which is a hearings officer hearing. So fairly similar, and the criteria are almost the same.
All right. Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselors Paulson and then Benards.
Just, I'm just curious. Mr. Bush, in his rebuttal remarks, I want to kind of understand, looking at this map, I probably ought to be looking at a larger map, given the size of the area under discussion. But I kind of, it sounded like this is the only alternative for this entire area, that they have searched the available sites, and this is it. There are no others.
I think it's the best. They did consider looking at other sites in this cluster of CR zoning, but either they were fully developed, or they would abut even more residential properties. There's one just to the northwest of this site that's a CR zone property, but has a single-family dwelling on it, and it abuts three other single-family dwellings. So they ruled that out in favor of this site. And I believe that's reasonable.
So when the next guy comes in, because there are so few sites, apparently two, because these other four are gone, this CR and the CR you just mentioned, next door, is it at the?
It's, it has frontage on 17th, but it's a CR zone property. So on this map, it's the northernmost CR zone property that it abuts on to 17th, just north in this little cluster of CR.
Okay. So the next guy comes in, the next company comes in, and there's a problem with co-location, or the next two come in, one has co-located, there's room for one. Where does the next guy go? Because we have to let them in, right?
We can't say yes to one provider and say no to another if they didn't strike the name.
So they will go into one that is even less appropriate, is what's, is kind of what you're describing for me. And I think council ought to watch this really closely on this one and on others, is a kind of cascading effect, as these companies begin to use up these available properties, we're going to have them locating in worse and worse locations, more, that will require substantially more variance.
That's possible, yes.
If they're even available.
That's possible.
Madam Mayor?
What kind of a plan is that? That's rhetorical, but what kind of a plan is that? I'm having trouble with that.
I think that Mr. Gross has a comment?
Yes, if I may. You've kind of put your finger on kind of the balancing act that we're looking at with this case, but more importantly, with the ordinance coming forward, the wireless ordinance that's coming forward. And that's that we kind of have a choice. We can either say, you know what, we're going to go with the fewest towers possible to provide the service, to cover the area, and we're willing to go with the highest, therefore we're willing to go with really high towers. Or we're, we don't want those really high towers, so we're willing to go with smaller towers spread out over a greater area. Either way, we have to figure out a way to let the providers serve all of that yellow area up there, because that's where they're trying to, that's where the demand is, and that's where they're trying to provide the service to. All of those yellow boxes up there are somebody's home that doesn't have adequate cell service today.
Well, let me, just if I may, Madam Mayor, one of those little yellow spots, a couple of those actually are mine, one of them I live in. And you know what? I'm an AT&amp;T customer, a perfectly satisfied AT&amp;T customer, who can go into my basement. I can't go over to the Capitol basement and get AT&amp;T to work. I don't notice that that covers, this doesn't cover that. But I can go into my own home, which is actually north of this a bit, up above D Street, and I don't have any problem at all. And I don't know if it's because another one of these great, big, huge towers has been located just a couple blocks away on Market and 17th. And what's happening is, this isn't like the first big tower. This is, right? I mean, this is the second big tower in that area, as I recall.
Well, this is, there is no other tower that we know of, because that's why they're having to build a new tower. If there was an existing tower where they could co-locate, that would serve the area in question, then they would do that.
Where's the map?
Yeah.
Well, there's one up on Market and 17th.
Right. But that's north of the area that's currently underserved.
Well, it all looks yellow to me, along that whole corridor, is what it looks like.
It's really the area between the intersection of Center and 17th Street, over to the east to where Salem Hospital is, up to about D Street. It's that area that we're talking about, is, they need to find a place where they could put a facility to serve that, that area. And that, that map there is trying to show you, by doing, by locating the tower where they're proposing, they'll be able to provide an extended, adequate coverage area from what they have today.
Do you all check their information on these coverage areas?
Well, we're not radio frequency engineers, so, I mean, we, we, we look to see that they provided information.
Okay.
And that it's been provided by a radio frequency engineer, but beyond that, that's, that's all we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Paulson, followed by Counselor Benards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Cole. This is the, just the slide I was looking for. Following on Counselor Bennett's comments, I think the important thing to remember is we're only talking about one carrier here. There, remember, they can't locate on Salem Hospital's roof, because other carriers are there and taking it up, and they're asking them to move. So we need to remember that there might be one, for all I know, 50 feet away from this one. I don't, I don't live there, I don't drive there every day. So we're, we're having to look at, you know, individual carriers' ability to serve our constituents, and that's something that we need to consider. And, I don't know, this is, my whole question was to get to this slide, so, I pulled it up on the staff report, but it's interesting to see exactly what they're up against, you know, between this and then the zoning that's there adjacent to it. And it kind of leads me to the question of, does an applicant, when they apply, need to, I don't know, provide proof that there are no other areas within a certain X radius of the location they're proposing? Or is that kind of a gut feel check? Or, I'm just curious what our code says currently.
Just one moment. I'll get that for you. So for the criteria for the administrative conditional use, they have to show that co-location on existing wireless communication facilities within the cell service area of the proposed site's not feasible. Depending on how they define their service area, that's what we get from them, because that's what their radio frequency engineers figure out. And then they look at the sites within the area. So consultants such as Mr. Forsberg drive around. They find properties. They do a lot of research on the properties to find out what's there. In this particular case, there are no cell towers in that service area that they designated. And even the hospital site is on the east, it's actually outside their service chosen search ring that they use to try to figure out where to put the facility. And the options are very limited. So I think they did meet that criterion. They provided documentation, written statements, they did provide some information after the public hearing, after the record closed, and during that rebuttal period, and the hearings officer chose to accept that. And that was following up on items that came in after the public hearing, especially regarding the cemetery, and additional questions about, about the Salem Hospital property. And they did resubmit that for this hearing, so it could be officially entered as new evidence that could be discussed tonight. And they also provided additional information on, well, instead of this site, one of the other criteria for submittal of- other criteria for submittal of the application that goes along with that co-location criterion is to look at alternatives within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the proposed location. Also, it's all CR zoned, it's all within three hundred feet of residential or CO, so that any sites that are under that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius also would require a variance and also be close to residential or commercial office. So there weren't any better sites. The one that they mentioned was the CR zone site with frontage on Eighteenth, but it has a single-family dwelling on it, has adequate room in the rear yard, but then it's abutting three other residential properties. So they ruled that one out, and I believe that's reasonable.
Okay, so just to be clear and make sure I understood that, so, one, we look at the point that they are requesting, and we look within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of that to see if there's anything else. And we can do that as staff, obviously, because that's relatively easy to do. The other is, we're generally defining the service area based on what they present as the service area they're trying to reach.
Right. And as Nan mentioned, I believe, the cemetery, we did correct the information in the staff report in the first time, where they'd said that no cell towers are allowed in that public cemetery zone. In fact, in the staff report, we said, well, yes, you could have done a location in the cemetery zone, but that's a National Register Historic Site. And when I wrote the staff report for this hearing, I identified it as such, and that would actually go through an administrative conditional use process, the same as this one, plus historic review, in order to get approval there. And also, they have documentation saying the cemetery said no.
Historic metal church.
With Historic Landmark Commission, exactly.
Thank you.
Counselor Benards?
Thank you. While you're switching back, if you would, back to the zoning map, I would appreciate that. I just had a rhetorical, well, not rhetorical, an actual question. How many trees do we have, cell tower trees do we have in the city of Salem?
I can think of three others.
So this is a fairly new thing?
This would be the fourth.
This will be the fourth one?
There's also a communication tower that's far on the outskirts of, I think it's close to the city limits, but it wasn't a commercial wireless facility. And I think that one's also designed as a tree toward, in South Salem.
Thank you, I'm just trying to get context to the whole thing. What I wanted to look at here specifically was the, is there any piece of property on that map between, say, Fourteenth and Twenty-Fourth, that someone could, could put a cell tower and not be within three hundred feet of a residential zone?
All the brown areas are residential high-rise. The orange areas are RM2 zoning, the yellow are single-family residential zoning. RM2 is multiple-family residential as well. That's North Salem High School. These are all single-family residential in yellow. All of these CR zone properties in this cluster are within three hundred feet of either residential or commercial office. All of these other areas are either RM2, CO, RS.
So what you're saying to me is that basically, no, the answer is no, I can't find a piece of property that wouldn't be within three hundred feet of a RS zone?
Except as I identified in the staff report for the hearings officer, the center of Lee Mission Cemetery.
Which we've now said probably is a very high likely not to be.
Your words, not mine. And also, the hospital, it has been pretty clear that they don't want to negotiate with the applicant at this point for any sites.
Okay. And so I, part of what I'm looking for is just where the, where our rules take us, what, what rules do I have to abide by? And at this point, we haven't adopted the new code for cell towers. I'm abiding by what the rules are that have already been set out in precedence. And precedent says that we can't prevent them from having a site, we have to figure out what the best location is, or they have to figure it out, and then we have to figure out if it fits within, within us. But, but in essence, we could preclude a single cell tower, literally with, locating within the city of Salem, nearly, nearly, because of this three-hundred-foot setback.
If you don't allow variances, yes.
If you don't allow variances. And then, and the courts say that we, we have to do some of this, or we're in trouble. We're basically getting rid of commerce in this community.
Right, we can't effectively prohibit service.
Well, that's, that was my point, is that it's just difficult to find a location that's not, not outside of three hundred feet of a single residential zone. How can we mitigate, mitigate the situation? It sounds like cell towers are, or, sorry, fir trees are a way that they're headed to, at least at this point, and that we're trying our best.
We're trying to find other options other than tree designs, too. I'm hoping that if we have to go through a variance process again, and in the future, if the code amendment passes, that we get more creative designs that are different than just trees, too.
Thank you.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. Just following up on Counselor Benard's, I, again, I want to, I want to understand, when the next company comes, who we cannot deny under this scenario, where do they go? Where, where do we put them? If they can't join AT&amp;T on their seventy-foot tower, as I understood it, I didn't hear it as fifty-five feet, maybe I misunderstood.
The, the next level down, the next array would be lower on this tower, so I think that the center of the antennas would be about fifty-five.
Would, is it at all possible, you, you know this area, I mean, you've driven it, I'm sure a lot of people have, really, what you've got here, it's really kind of striking because it's all telephone poles and wires, all the way down Seventeenth, all the way along Center Street. Could you use the existing telephone poles, pole by pole, with an antenna or whatever it is these folks use to push into an area to meet this area's need?
The providers that do have franchise agreements are doing more of that.
Uh-huh.
And they have a few sites, I don't have that on the map, AT&amp;T doesn't currently have a franchise agreement, so that wasn't an option for them.
But they can get one.
They can, in the future, yes.
They'd have to pay for it, but they, yeah.
Right, so that's another option. But with that kind of a facility, they wouldn't be able to put as many antenna on one pole. So this facility on one array, I believe, is twelve antennas possible? If they wanted to provide twelve antenna on utility poles, they would have multiple utility poles. So it would affect more properties.
Right, I, I guess the thing I'm asking is, to follow up on Counselor Benard's, there's ways to do it, it just costs more money. Do I understand it correctly? You need to have a, a franchise agreement, they have to reach an agreement with the city to provide service here, which costs them. I mean, they would, they would share a franchise fee. They can use poles that are normal height, that, many of which already exist, to provide their service. It's more expensive, because they can't put seventy-foot towers with huge arrays on it disguised as a tree. It's just more expensive. It's not like they can't do it. And I look at my AT&amp;T bill, I'm paying for a pretty good, a pretty good bunch of, and apparently all my neighbors are, including my neighbor who isn't getting real good service. So I, I want to understand this better, that we're not precluded, I guess what I want to know is, under the current system, we're not precluding anyone from doing cell service, we're just, it's just going to cost more because the available, appropriate available land is less. Is that fair?
I'd say it would cost more if we are encouraging providers to get franchise agreements, if we're going to make that a priority. Is the city willing to force all carriers to get franchise agreements? So it's a fair, level playing field. Currently, we have a few providers that have done that, because that fit their business model.
Under the, under the proposed ordinance that's coming, we actually have a, a priority scheme that encourages co-location first, including co-location in the right-of-way.
Right.
Before a new tower. So under the proposed ordinance, we would have some regulatory scheme to, to, to point to and say, well, our preference is you do co-locate. But we don't have that under today's code, and what she's, what Pamela's presenting tonight is our best attempt to use today's code and to show, and to use the criteria for, of approval under today's code.
Well, maybe we ought to wait till the code's passed and have a code that apparently will work for more providers. I'm just having trouble with this idea that was put, put forward, I guess. I'm trying to understand if, if this is correct, that, that others can't enter the market here, they can, it's going to be different under the new code, and it would be, under our current code, apparently, very difficult without substantial variance. But it, but you could do it, it just costs you more money.
I'm not sure either Pamela or I have the technological expertise to tell you that, yes, indeed, they can get the same service level by co-locating several smaller antennas on the utility poles. I don't know if the mayor would care to let the applicant speak to that point.
I would like to do that. I'd like to know for certain whether Mr. Benard's question is for staff, or do you want to defer your question until Mr. Bush has a chance to speak?
It was actually that exact question, and I was going to point it to staff, since I didn't know if the, the applicant could come back and, and give us some information.
He can, he can. Mr. Bush, would you like to come to the podium and answer questions that have come up in regard to some of this information that's just been given?
Yes, thank you. These are all very good questions. And, you know, I jumped up because we're, we're starting to go down the path of making a decision based upon radio frequency design by non-experts. When I go in the lobbying capacity to different jurisdictions, I talk about, you can change the design of these sites, but it's like pushing on a balloon. You push down on one side, it changes the requirements or the configuration on the other side. So it's, it's possible to install antennas on perhaps not existing utility poles, because they weren't designed low to handle it, but you may have to replace it. And then the question becomes, what's the elevation? If it's telephone, the, the telephone poles are generally forty feet, which means about six feet below ground, so they're thirty-four, thirty-five feet tall. And if you start installing antennas below the cables, you're below that thirty-three-foot FCC mark, and then you're shooting straight into trees. So you won't get very far at all. We have to clear the clutter with the antennas. So let's assume that there's a changeout of the telephone pole or the power pole to go, to add additional height. So then the question becomes, how will the antennas be mounted on the pole? Will they be flush-mounted, which means we have to fit a lot of antennas on there because of the different technologies, radio frequencies and technologies? So we can't go up five feet, we have to go up probably twenty, twenty-five feet, and we're starting to get to the same height of the second carrier on that same pole. So then at fifty-five feet, you're clearing the trees, most of them, there are some fir trees that are probably taller than that, but in the area here, that I recall the photos of from being out there, they're probably forty-foot range. And we'll clear it, but how far does it go? That's where we need the radio frequency engineers. Like Pamela said, AT&amp;T could have applied for a taller tower here, but gone through a slightly different process. But the radio frequency engineers determined that the right height for the center line, tip height sixty-nine eleven, plus or minus because of the, the shape of the tree at the top. And that will get far enough so that it doesn't interfere with the adjacent sites but provide coverage. If we go down to fifty-five feet for AT&amp;T's network, it's possible it won't work. Or you'll get a block or two, which means then you have to have this antenna array every block or two to provide service to everybody's home. Then we have ten of these hearings with ten groups complaining, I'm sorry, expressing their concerns about the visual, the visual appearance. And it, it's the trade-off. You can, like, like you said, you can have the taller structure with fewer of them around town, or you can have lower ones with a lot more of them around town.
Which is what we have now. I mean, you come into my neighborhood, this neighborhood, and you see tall poles with antenna on.
The, the one hundred-foot?
Not a hundred-foot.
Okay. Well, we just had one, I was here, the last time I was here, it was for the hundred-foot tall structure on, I can't remember.
Yeah, that's a different part of town.
It's a different part of town.
Another part of my ward. You just keep coming in.
We, we love you. So, so, but now, what we're seeing is we're getting closer into the residential area where there's good, we expect the demand will be intense from residential usage, and so the desired coverage footprint is lower, if it is smaller. If the desired coverage footprint is smaller, we have to be lower, so we can get the volume of data out in a smaller footprint. So, it's a very good question, and it's, that's the radio frequency denying, the radio frequency science behind it. So, I wish it was a magic answers.
It is.
Thank you. Yeah.
Were there any further questions for Mr. Bush? All right. All right. I'll close the hearing now, and counsel can deliberate.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move the city council deny the September fourth, two thousand thirteen decision of the hearings officer for variance administrative conditional use site plan review number thirteen dash oh-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second your discussion.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanke to deny the hearings officer's recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I thought that the discussion was really interesting. It was part of the reason I called this up, besides making the motion to deny, was to have a discussion about cell towers, because this is apparently the future of Salem, is tall cell towers located in residential neighborhoods within thirty feet of homes. This one's a little, not quite as bad. It's only seventy feet tall, it's a little further than thirty feet. It'll only hit Mr. Adams' house and his two neighbors who are down the street, but it's still very close. I, I would really submit there is absolutely no demonstrated need for this particular site at this particular height with this level of variation on our current code, knowing that full well that we're going to be looking at this code again. I think there is a, a real question, there is a real question in my mind on the process that was used. I think information was bought, brought late, I think it was brought late for whatever purpose, I won't assign motives here, but I don't know, and haven't had a chance to follow up on any of these four, which keep, seems to keep growing, alternatives that could have occurred, except for whoever at the cemetery said no, I guess. I guess somebody at the hospital said no, but without any real serious discussion about what's going on in that particular neighborhood. And I think there, there is a way to use Pioneer Cemetery. It is more difficult, more appropriate for the neighborhood, in that you're not nearly affecting homeowners the same way. I, I also question the need, because I know personally the service is excellent, in the yellow part that they showed us. It is just not true that it is spotty service with dropped calls. I call each of you Sunday evenings before these council meetings from Gates, which is, as Counselor Benard's knows, just beyond the hope of cell coverage, and can still get coverage until the calls drop. That's bad service. That's where you get a call and nobody's there, except you've got my phone number saying I call, that's bad coverage. Calling you from Salem, anywhere in Salem, except the basement of the Capitol, apparently, I can get through to you and find out if you have any poles or anything like that. So I can tell you right now, the service in that neighborhood is excellent, perfectly adequate to excellent. So I am having a very difficult time understanding, I guess, when you compound it with, there are alternatives beyond tall towers, this level of tall tower. There are other ways to do this, these sound engineers or whatever, some of this becomes, for me, real difficulty, but there are ways to do this differently, to configure it differently, without taking these older, denser neighborhoods and cramming these huge towers in them disguised, apparently, as a tree. And, and I, that to me continues to be kind of one of the, one of the funny parts of this, I don't know. I guess, just ultimately, I would ask you, if you don't agree with me, we should, we should just deny this, then I would ask, just based on the procedural problems with this, it be sent back to the hearings officer for a relook at this whole thing, to our planning staff, to assist A&amp;T in seeing if there are alternative sites, and give this neighborhood a chance. They're just, I, I don't know, I, the thing, I guess, just in closing, which really bothers me, is, after this, there are no more pieces of land in Nan, in northeast neighbors, apparently, for this kind of cell tower. Where do they go next? What do we do with our code next to impinge on these older, more delicate neighborhoods that we keep saying as council goals we're trying to preserve, and we keep doing things that make it more and more difficult for them to continue to stay stable, economically healthy, economically healthy? And I, I really ask you to join me in this, I think it's, it's time to kind of stop and rethink this issue. And I'm, I'm going to probably make the same pitch in our further discussion of cell towers. This is out of hand. towers. This is out of hand. It's the, it's the tail wagging the dog on this one, and I really ask you to, to join me in opposing this. Supporting my motion opposing the cell tower.
Is there further discussion? Counselor Dickey.
Yeah, thank you. I have to say, I've really struggled with this one because I, I understand the economic reasons that AT&amp;T wants to put this here, but I also understand some of the arguments that the neighborhood association has made, and a little unclear about what happened at the hearings officer. Hearing bits and pieces, I'm not clear on that. I think it's unfortunate that this is coming to us kind of just before we look at our ordinance and have a chance to really chew on it as a council and decide what our priority is going to be for cell towers. My concern is that passing this, then our ordinance looks very different than what we allow here, and then it, you know, it just, that timing of it just doesn't feel right. I'm still weighing whether I think this is a good idea or not at this time. I would definitely support seeing if there were opportunities to send it back to staff and look at any other options that might be out there. I'd like to have a better idea of where we're going with our ordinance before making this decision. And, you know, and apologies to the applicant because that, that's not their fault that they made this application and then we're taking our time doing, doing the ordinance, but it's kind of like having that bigger picture and knowing where are we going with this. If we, you know, we allow this, and then suddenly we've got, we've decided on other priorities, smaller, you know, shorter towers in more places, larger towers that can hold more arrays or whatever they are. I just think that, that is, that makes this decision all that much more difficult. So I'm still weighing it. Would love to know what other options might be out there. I think staff did a good job of kind of outlining what's happened so far, but if there's any other options that we can look at at this point, I would definitely be willing to consider that.
Counselor Claussen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second, the extra condition.
Yes, I believe staff recommendation is inclusive of the extra condition 11.
I'll agree to that.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Claussen and seconded by Counselor Bernard to, to move a second, excuse me, to move a second motion.
A substitute motion.
A substitute motion to affirm the hearings officer's decision.
With the additional conditions, staff recommend.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. With the additional, all right, thank you. Is there discussion on that motion?
Yes, ma'am. I'm moving this for two reasons. One being just where a recommendation to deny leaves us is awkward. Second being that we have an existing code. I know we're talking about making a new code and amending the existing codes, but we have an existing code. I think we as council need to affirm that our existing codes that are in existence are there in existence for people to use. I don't think we can do something based on the fact that we're going to change something in the future, and we have not done that yet. We haven't even started the real conversation in the public. And that existing code, it appears to me has been met. A service area need has been identified by an applicant. It's not ours to judge if their business decision is right or wrong. And then we look at the greater service area within that, within that region that they've identified on the map that's in the staff report and was presented tonight, and I, I don't see anything there. I mean, I don't see a lot that's going to help them or us to send it back to anybody for spending additional time on it. Secondly, looking at the 250-foot radius from the identified location, which is identified in our existing code, again, I don't see anything. So I think it's actually the trees, while they're not the perfect thing, I'll tell you what, they look a lot better. We got them in South Liberty, and they look pretty darn good. It took me two months driving by a tree to know that that was a cell tower, as unobservant as I guess I am. Also, the one out by McKay High School, I see it almost daily on my rounds with the school district and my employment, and, you know, they're relatively okay. So I appreciate the fact that that condition is in here, and it would, it would look, I'm not going to say good, but I'm going to say that it's at least a much better structure than a big steel tower with steel appendages. So, anyway, that's my motion affirming staff recommendation.
All right. Any further discussion on the substitute motion? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of remarks on, I agree with the, the items as put forth by Counselor Claussen. We do have current codes, and that's where the application should be viewed at in light of our current codes. Otherwise, we could start doing really crazy things, like, oh, let's kick that one out right now, change the code because, because, because as we go down the line, we need to definitely have a conversation as the new code comes in. We talked about it a little bit before. We always tell the neighborhood associations, don't complain about it after the fact. Look at them with us and, and let us change regs before things get to us. I, I feel for the property owners that are near this. I also don't agree with the premise that it's not needed, because if it's not needed, why would any capitalistic corporation put something in that's not needed? That just makes no sense or logic from a profit and loss perspective. That being said, you know, we've had discussions on where will communications go down the line. Will it be these gargantuan cell towers all over? We've seen how communications have moved. And someday, all the towers will be gone, and we'll be using something else that actually is a low layer that floods or comes through some other kind of wire or fiber. But we have to deal with what we have right now. In regards to information presented, this is a de novo hearing. We close public hearings, leave them open for public comment a lot. And then the applicant has right of rebuttal on the opposite side of that. So that's not as concerning to me. It sounds like the neighborhood association turned in some material after and asked questions at the public hearing, which may be the reason the record was left open to get that. But we don't have a functional piece inside of that mechanism for other people to know what came in during that, that opened record period prior to rebuttal coming in, so that I don't know what we can do with that one. But again, I'll be supporting the substitute motion with the additional recommendation for condition 11.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, I would normally agree with my two colleagues on this one, except this isn't the existing code we're doing here. This is an 81% variation on it just in size and locate, and length, distance from residential property. It's got one condition, one variation after another. This isn't the existing code. In fact, what you're approving tonight probably looks more like another code we haven't, as you all said, we haven't even seen or talked about. But to call this existing code, I think is to way overstate what's going on here. This is a very, very profound variation on what we call existing code, which would put this, this thing 300 feet from the nearest residential unit if you were willing to follow code. Now, if you're willing to throw that in, I'd be willing to vote for it. They wouldn't allow it to be here, because this can't occur with 300 feet. But I really disagree with calling this current code. That's not what's going on here. This is a complete rewrite for this company and this location. That's all it is to the detriment of these homeowners. So that's how I see it. It's just quadsome.
All right. Is there further discussion? All right. We'll call for the question on the motion, the substitute motion made by Counselor Claussen and seconded by Counselor Bernard, I believe was correct. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Will the nays please raise their hands? So the no votes are Counselor Dickey, Counselor Thomas, and Counselor Bennett, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a second public hearing. Would the recorder please, no, you don't have to introduce this one? All right. Counselor Bernard, you have a motion for this item 4B.
I need microphone first. I move to reopen the hearing on November 18th.
All right. Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bernard and seconded by Counselor Clem to reopen this hearing on November 18th. Is there discussion? Counselor Bernard.
I just quickly address my, I just, I'll have a statement that evening that I'll read at that point.
All right, fine, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
If I could just make a quick announcement for the counselors, that this matter is a pending quasi-dishal land use proceeding for the council, so please watch expert contacts.
All right. Thank you. All right. Back to the agenda. We have no special orders of business or unfinished business. There are two information reports that I'd like to draw your attention to. Counselor Claussen.
I was waiting for you, I was hoping for you to say any comments on that.
Yes, any comments on these reports?
Yeah, I actually just randomly have had a chance to drive down Madrona a few times on the way down to 25th, and man, oh, man, you want to feel like Salem's going somewhere. Drive past the new Norpac site. It's incredible. There is a lot of work going on there, and that's really good for Salem. And it was mentioned in the staff report on urban development, and I think that's a great thing, and I'm glad that we as council were able to help out with pushing a good thing for Salem forward.
Thank you very much. Important point there. Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I wondered if we could have John take us through some of this economic development information contained in 7B, the fiscal year 2012, 2013 economic development activities update. It really, along with the Norpac site, there's just a lot going on, if that'd be okay with you.
That would be very helpful, I think, and it looks to me like...
Yep. John Wales from Urban Development. We've got Doug Rux here, who has prepared the report. I might just, just give an intro. The council asks every quarter that we come back with an economic development report, and I think this is the second one that we prepared. And I think you'll see, and Doug's going to just go through a quick run-through of what the items are. Some of these are related to specific projects that are very visible, as you drive by, as Counselor Claussen mentioned. Some of them are activities that are going on behind the scenes that are not so apparent, and some activities and some, some data that we put in place to help with our economics activity. And so we, that's what this report reflects both, and I think this is a good opportunity for us to highlight it, and Doug's got a quick summary for us.
All right. Mr. Rux, welcome.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. Doug Rux, Assistant Director, Urban Development. I'm going to read one section of the report, and then I'm going to speak to the balance of it. But the one piece I did want to read is that out of the city of Salem, city council goals for 2013, 20 through 2015, there was one that focused on the city's economic development. And that states, initiate and pursue economic development strategies and appropriate funding for strategies that place emphasis on attracting and retaining jobs and strengthening the economic prosperity for Salem residents and businesses. So this report that's in your packet this evening addresses several topics of things that we have been involved with over the course of the last quarter. And of course, as I must always say, we do not do this alone. We do this in partnership. And SEDCOR recently came before you and gave their annual report on activities, and we work with them on a daily basis. We also work with Business Oregon, the Mid Willamette Valley COG, and other partners that are necessary in our activities on retention and recruitment activities. As Counselor Claussen mentioned, one of the first pieces of this report refers to activities from the enterprise zone, and the council had approved three applications for a five-year enterprise zone program. Enterprise Zone is a tax abatement program. It's a short term. So this occurred for Norpac, Henningson Cold Storage Company, and for Garmin AT. And those are noted, and as was noted, is that Norpac and Henningson are out doing a lot of construction right now, and Garmin is in the queue with their permits and so forth to start their construction as well. The business retention activities, I think you've heard us say over the course of the last year and a half or two years, 80% of our business job growth will occur from existing companies, so we are focusing on that, and we have been focusing on that for the last couple of years. On an average, about eight companies are touched every month. These are traded sector companies within the city of Salem who are selling their goods and products outside of this market area. This is also being done in coordination with SEDCOR. So we take the top 100, we basically divided them up, and we're going out and we're meeting with companies in their place of business. We're informing them of enterprise zone. We are connecting them with Business Oregon Financial Programs, or with the Mid Willamette Valley COG and their loan program, and giving them other pieces of information, maybe lean manufacturing activities that may make their business more profitable and streamline those operations. We also embarked on industrial lands inventory as part of the economic opportunities analysis that's being led by community development. We did not have a good inventory of all of the businesses that exist, those traded sector companies that are located on our industrial lands. And so we've gone out and inventoried every parcel based upon zoning within the city of Salem, and identified what companies are there. And we'll now go through that analysis, and we'll be giving that data to Glenn and his group to share with their consultant as we go through that process. And finally, trying to be smarter, more educated on properties that we have in Salem and what infrastructure needs. And so there's been a cooperative effort that's been occurring between the city manager's office, community development, public works, and urban development, and looking at key properties that keep coming up that are for lease, and finding out what those needs are, and looking back at companies that may be talking with SEDCOR, what are they looking for? Building square footage size, water size, what kind of sanitary sewer, what kind of improvements may be necessary, what utility district serves them, what is that capacity, and building that data set of information. Two that are noted is we started looking at the airport, and so we have land for lease at the airport off of Turner Road and north and south of Airway Drive. And so we gathered all that information, so we now know what infrastructure is needed, where there are sites that are ready to go, and we'll be able to share that with our partners as companies are looking at aviation-related industries to locate on the airport. So that's a quick summary of what's contained in your report.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions that they have for Mr. Rux or also for Mr. Wales? I'm very pleased that this week we're scheduling two ribbon cuttings. One is with the New Salem Clinic on the property that's owned by PAC Trust out on South Kubler, and another, the, I believe it's Abomir Rehab Facility. So it's always nice to know that there are going to be ribbon cuttings, because that means that jobs have been created with the construction, and now the businesses will be open for the public, and that's particularly important. And I do also want to note that both of those are really in the medical and healthcare fields, which is one of the five specifics targeted fields that we've been working on. So very pleased about that as well. All right. Is there any other, any other information or questions about the information reports? All right. Ordinances. I think we have a first reading. Would the recorder like to introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 3213 relating to historic preservation and procedures for land use applications and legislative land use proposals establishing city council authority to initiate city council review of major historic design review decisions for new construction, amending SRC 230.005, 300.100, and 300.620.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this, as, as you could tell from the title, I just want to make a real clear kind of for the record as to what's going on here. We're moving through a change in the Salem revised code that will allow the city council, again, as we haven't done in the recent past, to have reviews of some of the major historical design reviews done by our landmark, whatever it's called.
Historic landmarks.
Historic landmarks. Historic Landmarks Commission. More particularly, I think, when we had talked about this before, at least from my perspective, it was relative primarily to the state hospital grounds and its redevelopment, but there are other parts of town where this could... are other parts of town where this could become a really important part of the council's ability to take a look at decisions so we can kind of balance all of the values at stake in some of the major decision-making that goes on around these issues. So, I think this is a very good change in the ordinance, and urge your support.
All right, so urging our support for the, to establish a public hearing, are there other counselor comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And we have a second ordinance for first reading. Would the recorder like to introduce that, please?
Ordinance Bill number 3413 relating to the city's municipal storm sewer system permit, amending SRC 75.050, 75.060, 77.090, 78.030, 78.210, and 80.100, adding SRC 80.135, and repealing SRC 75.110 and 76.150.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett.
Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Bernard to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no second readings? Is there anyone signed up for public comment at this point? No, all right. No new business, and we are adjourned. Thank you.[1782.88]